Take up the meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Successor Agency. May we have a roll call for the city council?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan, Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
For the successor agency.
Board members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan, Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the March 26, 2013 joint public meeting of the city council and successor agency was postponed on Thursday, March 21, 2013, on the board outside City Hall. The first item before we move on to the public hearing is successor agency approval of the joint city council housing authority and successor agency meetings minutes of March 19, 2013.
So moved.
Second. The minutes stand approved and submitted. Next, please.
Item two is a public hearing Director of Community Development regarding proposed courtyard by Marriott hotel development to be located at 225 West Wilson Avenue. At 2A is a council resolution approving an amended restated disposition and development agreement. B is a successor agency resolution approving amended and restated disposition and development agreement. C is a council motion approving First Amendment instrument imposing covenants on real property. D is council motion approving stage two design review subject to comments and conditions of approval. E is council motion approving variance for floor area ratio based on findings and conditions. And F is council motion approving urban art program subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Okay, before I go to Mr. Ochoa, is there anyone that wants to submit a card and speak on the matter? Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Both of these items on this agenda are interesting in that they are inextricably linked with the dissolution of redevelopment. And with this item, item two, the Comar Investments Project hearkens back to a decision that was made by the council in 2009 to locate a multi-story hotel on the site. At this point, we are asking for the amendment and restating of the original DDA, subject to a few wrinkles that allow us to come into alignment with the dissolution process and accelerate some of the terms of the deal itself. So with that, I'll have Mr. Lanza-Fayn walk you through the project.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and the successor agency. As Mr. Ochoa had stated, this item before you is to accelerate some of the terms, namely, it was a ground lease, we want to accelerate those terms and make it a direct sale. This being in consistent with the dissolution act to dispose of property quickly and also provides for development of the site much more quickly. To review, and I will say as a general statement, the project that is before you today is that which you have approved already. The design studio has looked at the design and still thinks it's a valid and good design, so we're asking to update that. It's an 11-story, 173-room business class hotel with some of the standard amenities that you would have. The project has gone through an evolution. It meets the parking requirement using different tools that are provided in the Glendale Municipal Code. They will park 56 spaces on-site. They will pay an in-lu fee, parking in-lu fee of over $1.3 million to the city of Glendale. And then they will also lease on an annual basis 74 parking spaces in a garage. It yields about $26,000 a year. This is the project as it was approved. It takes a vacant, underutilized parking lot at the northeast corner of Wilson and Central and develops a courtyard by Marriott. These are some of the, this is the rendering that you saw before. The improved entitlements, our standard entitlements, environmental review, we looked at it, excuse me, we looked at it, you looked at it three different times because of some changes, minor modifications, the last being in May of 2012. The final design approval, which we are asking again for you to renew, the packet is there, again, same project that you saw before. The instrument imposing covenants is a tool that we use to ensure that the project, which is utilizing an incentive provided in our code, actually gets built, that is a hotel. So they will be by covenant to do that. A variance for floor area ratio, it's a very unusual situation, unique in that the project meets our standards in terms of total height and stories, however, it exceeds the floor area ratio by just a bit because it is such a small site and we're putting the hotel. The last, you approved that variance in March of 2011. The urban art program, they are incorporating that into the design, and so we're asking that to be renewed. There was a disposition development agreement that included a ground lease of the property. That ground lease provided that the developer would lease the property for a period of time and then have the option to purchase it from the redevelopment agency. And then parking reduction permit, that is to utilize those tools that we talked about, that I had mentioned earlier, those tools found in our code. Again, here are some elevations of the project as approved. A night shot. This is the urban art program. Again, they're incorporating it in. This is the piece here, it is on the corner of Wilson and Central called Conversation. It is a sculpture that then is used, it's replicated and used as branding. There is this, they call this the art wall on the outside, which on the other side of this wall is the interior pool. Those windows will be lit up at night, and so you get an effect on both sides. The project as we proposed it to you is considered an enforceable obligation by the Department of Finance. We have listed it. We have a current agreement to carry out. The law does provide that we can amend those when they are consistent with the goals and objectives of the dissolution act. We believe that this is, it expeditiously disposes of the property. We don't have, it relieves the successor agency of several years of administering a lease, so those sale proceeds are sent out to the taxing entities, including the city of Glendale, much sooner. Finally, it facilitates development of the hotel, which yields revenue and job creation, both goals of the city, county, and state of California. The business amendment, the agreement that we're asking you to amend focuses on three areas. As I said, it accelerates that ground lease provision to sell the property, to make it a direct sale. The ground lease and all its associated terms are therefore eliminated, making a much cleaner transaction from the get-go. It does, the agreement then acknowledges the dissolution process and all of the different steps we need to go through, as well as in the scheduled performance, it accommodates for all of that. So in those three areas are where the changes are. Again, this is the restated or the original DDA, some of the terms in it and the amended, I've gone over those. One thing I would like to point out, there was a process for determining the fair market value of the property when it was sold. That survives, so there, this is a market rate transaction. There is no agency assistance. There wasn't in the original, and there is none now. It would be sold at a determined fair market value.
With those proceeds being chopped up between the various taxing entities, of which the city of Glendale is one?
Correct. Because of the time, the economy dipped, and so the project didn't get built. The dissolution act got adopted, and this project has been delayed a bit. Because of that, some of the entitlements that we reviewed earlier have in fact expired. So there is a request to re-entitle all of those same things. The project is not asking for any new entitlement, simply to re-entitle those, start the clock again. Where also, there are some that are still valid, that we would like for you to re-entitle so that they all run together at the same time. The entitlements to be renewed are here, the instrument imposing covenants, the stage two design, again, as I stated, the design studio has looked at the design and believe it is still a good and valid design and recommends approval. The variance for floor area ratio, as we talked about that unique situation. The urban art program being incorporated into the architecture, and then the second amendment to the mitigated negative declaration. We previously studied the impacts, it has been looked at again, is still valid, and so we'd like that to be renewed. Some of the fiscal impacts of getting, and the sooner the project is up and running, the sooner these impacts are realized. Sales proceeds, Glendale takes about 13.5%. I think I had calculated that before, based on an old appraisal, might be somewhere around $300,000 that would come back to the city, but that will be dependent on the fair market value. About $600,000 in fees, property tax, about $45,000 annually, but then the real important impact for us is transient occupancy tax, almost $800,000. This would go to the general fund to fund general services, police, fire, road maintenance, parks, libraries. It would go into the general fund for your decision to make.
And that 13.57% is consistent with our share of what that property tax revenue is overall? So the school district gets its share, the county of Los Angeles its share, and the state its share as well?
And finally, permanent jobs, permanent and temporary jobs come out. A quick project schedule, we're here today in March. We would bring this to the oversight board for their approval at their May meeting. Department of Finance then has five days to respond. If they approve it, project moves forward, and the start of construction is tied to their approval one year following that. If the department asks for more time, they are entitled to an additional 40 days to review it, in which time we'll most likely be talking back and forth. They could send the action back to the oversight board for reconsideration or deny it. If they were to reject it, there's still, this still is an enforceable obligation as it stands, and would still, the developer and successor agency would still carry out those terms. Finally, there is one more, the long-range property management plan is something that is how are you going to dispose of your property? That will come sometime in the summer, would give another opportunity to look at this. But staff is recommending that you modify the DDA to allow a direct sale. Development takes place much faster, we achieve those objectives. There are some resolutions for both the city council and the successor agency, and then motions for the council to achieve those entitlements. With that concludes my presentation. There are representatives of the development group, as well as the architect and staff, if you have questions.
Any questions or comments?
Refresh. We, Mr. Mayor, we did talk extensively about the parking situation, thoroughly hashed it out. What's in the plan that we're approving now is the same as we did then.
Nothing changes. Basically, this just accelerates the sale of-
Yes.
-land. Okay, I have two cards, Sue McCannion, followed by Aram Kazazian. And give us your name for the record, ma'am.
Sue McCannion. Good afternoon, Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, with counsel. I'm here, I own properties at 115 through 123 West Wilson, and I'm here to oppose the request for this in lieu of parking for the 56 spaces and paying for that, and then leasing out the 74 spots in the Orange, Wilson, no, Orange, California parking structure. That building's full as it is. I don't know where they would lease 74 spaces. I also own, excuse me, 204 North Orange, which is a private parking lot, and I think if the Marriott can't, they're only asking to build one, I guess, one subterranean parking. And they should be allowed to make more because they won't have parking. They're going to encroach on my parking lot, as most people do now, and I'm opposing that, and some of my tenants are here also to oppose it. I have eight tenants, and I think if they can't build more parking, then they shouldn't build a building. That's all I have to say.
Which buildings are those?
115 through 123.
Wilson.
Wilson.
What's there now? What is there now, so I can visualize it?
There's a restaurant, there's an nail shop, a beauty salon, a clock repair, a legacy book, comic book, and optical company.
The other side.
A perfume shop. But there's eight tenants I have there, and I have 26 parking places, and there's 18 that's taken with my tenants, and only eight left over, and my parking lot's full constantly. I mean, I can't, I could have a tow truck there all day long. So I know, there's not enough parking, there's only the one city parking that's next to mine, and that's all that's left around here, I mean, that area. So they need to put another subterranean in there for more parking. I mean, should be taken into consideration, big consideration. I appreciate you're hearing me.
Okay, thank you. Aram Kazazian.
Yes, my name is Aram Kazazian. You know, I was here when this project was originally approved, and I spoke in favor of this project, okay, because this project was built properly to per code. That's why I spoke for it. Now, let's be truthful, ladies and gentlemen, this project does not have 56 parking spaces. Let's tell the people exactly what it has. It has 39 parking spaces and has 12 handicap spaces. The rest of the 15 additional spaces, or 16, is blocking the handicap space, blocking the aisles, and as a valet parking, shoving them into the parking lot. That's what it is. So let's be truthful on this matter. Let's not be, you know, tell the people what it is. So that's why I objected to it. I mean, I don't have a problem of selling the land, that's fine, I have no problem with it. They're getting appraisal, that's why they're getting appraisal, no problem. Now, you're going to get $1.3 million into assessment, then they're going to come and tell us we don't have parking. You know, you want to build a parking structure to take care of this building, $20 million? Who's going to pay? The residents are going to pay that parking structure money. Why are we doing this? And what is the rush for it? You know, you have time to study it, and it's a problem. And I know the lease is not proper, but that's, I have no problem with that. You don't have to lease it. You can sell it, I have no problem with that. But let's be truthful on the parking, it's 39 spaces plus parking in the aisles and blocking the handicap space, so that's what gives them 56. So let the people know, that's what it is. So I have no problem. And I believe also, Mr. Najarian, you have a conflict interest in your 460 form, so you better look into that. Thank you very much. Now, I don't want to give names.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that was my sidebar with the city attorney, that in light of our strict campaign contribution ordinance, I will have to recuse myself.
Okay, no problem. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and who wants to go first?
Question. When did we initially study the traffic and the parking situation on this? 2010, 11?
Well, the first environmental review for the MND was in '09, and then the environmental review for the amended MND was in '11, and at those times, the second environmental review was in May of '12, where it was updated. And then all the other ancillary types of approvals took place in that period of time. The parking issue had been looked at and discussed. I would take serious exception with Mr. Kazazian's representations, that somehow handicap parking spaces are not parking spaces any more than handicap individuals are not individuals that have the ability and right to park on-site as outlined in the Americans with Disabilities Act. So those spaces are there as part of the hotel complex, they are counted, they're part of the standard, they're counted towards the parking demand of the project, and it's been reviewed and vetted ad nauseam at this point.
That's my point. We went through all this because we are very concerned about the parking. I park in the 33 garage once or twice a week, and it's getting fuller, but the upper level is still open all the time. Saying it's increasing down there. It's increasing. I used to park on level one, now level two, sometimes on level three. So more people are utilizing that garage. I'm not allowing this might be the last time we allow anybody else into that garage.
Let me just break in for a minute. A lot of, I've been noticing the same thing, but when you look at the vehicles, they're construction, they're big three-quarter ton pickup trucks, and I think they're the construction workers that are doing some of the construction. The next time you're there, check it out, you'll notice an inordinate amount of construction-
Just knew I was going off.
-three-quarter truck, three-quarter ton big trucks.
I'll be right.
And keeping in mind for the edification of the audience and the folks watching at home, as this environmental approval was crafted and considered and ultimately approved by city council, this is a business hotel. The reservation system is geared around the business traveler. Very often, folks who are traveling for business after flying in to the airport, or regardless of where they fly in, but they come in and they're doing business with any of our larger employers, they are not bringing their own car, they're being driven, they're being chauffeured, or heaven forbid, they're actually using transit. So the idea that you are somehow remiss in allowing for alternative ways of meeting that parking demand through tools that are on the books, that are lawful today, again, just doesn't hold water.
And we did, how many meetings do you think we had on this? They were announced, noticed, everything on it?
That was before my time, so I could not say-
Well, believe me, we-
Goes back, doesn't it, Frank?
We discussed this at length. That's putting it mildly.
Not in secret.
One other thing, one other thing is that the fee that they're paying, that $1.4 million, goes into a parking and transportation fund, and the idea, as far as I'm concerned, is that that money gets to be used to build another public lot if we need it, which will help your businesses a lot more than not having that $1.4 million come into that fund and having them build subterranean where your customers won't get to use it. If we build another lot, maybe behind Damon's, you know, sort of near your business, right behind, that's right behind you, right? The Damon's parking lot? That would give, okay, so I'm thinking of the wrong stretch of businesses, but we do have some public spaces that we could in the future, if we need to, build public lots, and I think that's what will really give people coming to downtown brand the parking, more than requiring any particular business to put the parking in. And just so you know, as far as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, the 73 leased spaces are not leased every single day, so they're not spaces that are taken away from the public during the day. It's only if they have a special event where they feel that they really need those spaces, they would be able to reserve those 73 spaces. But every day, those will still be available to the public, so.
No, no, we're not having an interchange, ma'am.
So I just want to let you know that I think that, you know, we definitely are aware of parking issues in the downtown. It's kind of a high-class problem, it means more people are coming to the downtown, and the idea of allowing these in-lu fees is that we can build public lots when we need to, as opposed to putting the burden on one business or restricting the parking by having it just under a private business's parking lot. So I think that's a trade-off that, you know, may very well come about, which will be a much better benefit to all of the surrounding businesses than having a private parking lot under the hotel. I'm also curious, Embassy Suites, do we know how many, how, kind of how full their lot is? Because I know when I've gone there, I've never had to go below the first floor in that building. I'm just thinking about it to get an idea of how much parking these hotels really require.
I can't give you the exact number, Ms. Friedman, but certainly it was something we looked at. When we looked at the parking, we had the developer survey the other hotels in town, and what we found is that we were forcing them to build parking that was, for the most part, being unused, which goes to the point that you just talked about. So with this, they're using, they're building the right amount of parking for everyday use. It's, again, as Mr. Ochoa had said, people are coming in, the business traveler are traveling some other way other than by car. If you go into the Embassy Suites or the Hilton right now, very little usage from that. So we took that into account as part of this whole analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let me start by talking about hotels in general here in the city, and then specifically about this project, and then also parking. So we have the Hilton, a flagship hotel, the Embassy Suites, which in my opinion is up to Hilton standard since it's a much newer property, and we have a new Homestead, all Suites Hotel going in across the street from the Americana. That's a Hilton product, so the Hilton Reservation System. And then finally, we'll have this Marriott coming in. So to me, that's a tremendous amount of synergy in this city, and specifically, when you take into account the housing and mixed use that's going to go across the street from your properties, I would say that the tenants there on Wilson, and I go to the Tep-Tai restaurant all the time, the tenants there on Wilson, I think they're going to see their businesses boom. With the housing across the street and this hotel, I think they're going to be in really, really good shape in the coming years. I'm familiar with that parking lot, I never parked there, by the way. I always go to the, I go to the public lot next to it, but I'm very familiar with that little, with that little, as you say, private parking lot. But overall, I just think this is the proper combination in terms of getting the lease for the property, or rather, for the spaces there at the public lot. And I park in that, that sort of, unfortunately, not many people park in that Orange Street garage, but I park there all the time and then walk on to wherever I'm going in brand. Lately, yeah, there's been, I'm having to go to the second floor, sometimes the third, mostly the second. But like I say, I noticed right off the bat that there were just a bunch of heavy-duty pickup trucks, and as you know, there's construction going on literally half a block away. But still, that parking structure is totally underutilized. Now, as for the hotel itself, I think it's going to just be great for that, great for the city in general, and great for that neighborhood. The architect and the developer have done an outstanding job. I mean, we really didn't go all the way through the presentation, but it's going to be a very architecturally significant hotel, and especially at ground level, whether you're walking down Wilson or driving up and down Central, I think you're really going to see a beautiful, beautiful building. So I'm very much in support of it, and I think it'll be tough while the construction is going on, there's no question about that, for some of the surrounding businesses, but once it's over, I think it's going to shoot up in terms of the type of presence that a hotel this size will mean for the surrounding businesses. So I think we need to move forward. It'll be an appraisal done at market value, whatever it's worth, that's what the owners will have to pay. I'm very happy we're taking another step forward in the process. So, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to A, B, C, D, and E. Is that possible?
Actually, no. Council actions are at 2A, 2C, D, E, and F. So there's a successor agency motion at, reservations are at 2A.
Believing successor out, I can move-
Correct.
-A, C, D, E, F.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan, Najarian, Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, for the successor agency.
2B.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Board members Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan, Najarian, Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, all right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kasakin, Mr. Najarian's votes shall be reflected as abstention by recusal on all items. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for those in the audience. What's next, please?
Next on the agenda at three is Director of Community Development regarding Alex Theater Fiscal Year 2012/13 Second Quarter Report and Expansion Project in Connection with specification number 3500. There is a number of sub-items. At three is successor agency motion to note and file the quarterly report. B is a council motion approving loan agreement in the amount of $750,000 to successor agency for completion of the project. C is successor agency motion approving loan agreement in the amount of $750,000 from the city for completion of the project. D is council resolution appropriating $750,000 to fund project. And E is successor agency resolution-
Yes, sir. The second half of this meeting's agenda relating to the Alex also points out some of the issues with respect to the dissolution act, wherein we are required, were required originally to construct this recognized obligation payment schedule, the ROPS, and list all of the potential projects that we might have that are obligations listed, bona fide obligations of the former redevelopment agency, well in advance of those projects ever coming to fruition or some kind of finality with respect to the expenditure of significant dollars, dollar resources. So when you look at the Alex Theater, what Mr. Landzepin will outline for you in just a second is that we had to put forth a scientific wild guess with respect to what this project might cost back when we first put it on the ROPS, because if we didn't put it on, we never would have gotten it. And now we have completed all of the design work and are hoping to secure additional resources to pay for the full expansion of the Alex Theater. But that hope is tempered by the realization that the State Department of Finance may or may not allow us, we are hopeful, and Mr. Landzepin will tell you why we're hopeful, may or not allow us to reimburse ourselves for this investment in the Alex as a historic and community resource for Glendale. So with that, Phil, why don't you?
Take them through.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and successor agency, certainly the main item for us today is the expansion project. But let me take a step back and give you their quarterly report because it leads into why we're really here. The Alex Theater is taking strides, and they're doing some things to become self-sufficient by 2015 when our management agreement expires with them. During this last quarter, they have taken several steps in advancing that, in attaining a liquor license and concession so that they can start to generate dollars that were going to a third-party vendor. Their ticket sales, their ticket program, box office program is improved. They have replenished some of their reserves, namely their general reserve and their capital reserve. Programming has been depleted with some of the productions that they have done, but they're on the way to getting those back to decent levels. So the picture, the boat is headed in the right direction. But certainly, the expansion project is the key for them because it will allow them to expand their business, which is the main business of operating the theater. Mr. City Clerk, if you can give us our presentation, I'll move through this, and if questions, stop me and slow me down. The Alex Theater, I always tease the executive director, I really do like, it's not just a landmark, it's a destination. From my perspective, it is certainly an icon of things people know Glendale for, but it is a tremendous economic engine. If there is a performance at the Alex Theater, many of the surrounding restaurants and businesses are doing good business. The project, the expansion project before you adds some additional space, it adds some underground storage, upgrades the dressing room areas. Today, those are above grade in large containers. Some of the dressing areas are in tents. The performers have to run out and change in a tent. So this would improve that, again, attracting desirable tenants. The freight and passenger elevator that will go down to the, today, there is a lift there that was certainly built long before I was ever born, and it takes about that much time.
Not that long, Phil.
To go up and down. Yes, that long. And it takes equally as long to go up and down. By improving the loading dock area and the freight elevator can load and unload programs much more efficiently. It will enable larger productions and improve the marketability of the theater. This is a rendering that you've seen before when we brought this project to you. The project really does add this loading dock, and then there's, underneath this area is the underground improvements. That south staircase gets enclosed. The Historic Preservation Commission has seen the project and approved it. You have seen the project and you approved it. I will note that the project also accommodates development to the south, the Lemley Theater Project. While we have some hoops to go through, because of the dissolution act on that project, we continue to move that forward. So this design accommodates for both of these projects. So I ask the question, well, why now? Why do we need to do it now? 2015 comes awfully soon. The Alex Theater needs that enhanced theater as long as possible to get a running start at expanding their business. It is the critical piece. The effects of a closure are catastrophic. We closed last summer. We're planning to close this summer. We needed to make that commitment. If we weren't to do it now, we can't recover this summer, and we would be closed yet a third summer. We are concerned that the tenants that are here have found other spots and won't come back. And so not only wouldn't we be helping business, we may in fact be hurting it. The funding availability, we have the majority of this project funded and approved on our ROPS. We want to use that as quickly as possible, so that we have accelerated the schedule for both of these reasons. There is a very small window of opportunity. We think that during the summer months, from July to, we've actually stretched it to November, we can survive with the theater closed, but then we need to reopen. Once the theater, once the calendar is cleared, we can't go back and say, oh, we're kidding, let's, we're going to have the season here. So once we've made that commitment, and because the project takes such a long, or needs such a long commitment, we have cleared the calendar and we've committed to this summer. The ROPS process, on the other hand, is the other thing that's kind of driving this, as Mr. Choa had said. It forces estimates on what you're going to spend some six to seven months ahead of time. In this case, we weren't even finished with our documents, our final documents, and we had to give them a number. You cannot revise that number once you present that to the Department of Finance. As I said, we're unable to really fine-tune it and bid it out and then know what the budget is to bring to you. So we use the best estimate that we had with that six to 10-month, or six to seven-month advance. If we need to revise something and put it on a future ROPS, that could be anywhere from six to 10 months in delay. So very, very little room for margin in what we're doing. We put this diagram together to try and visualize, or show you in a visual manner, where this mismatch takes place. In July of 2012 is when we had to give our estimate for the ROPS that is currently being funded, or I'm sorry, that we have current funding for right now, which means we needed to give them an estimate on the project. Over here is when we actually finished our construction drawings and were able to cost the project out. So here you are in March of 2013, a good nine months away. That really causes the problem because we have this short window, this small window, right here to do the project. Well, we're just getting our ROPS, which are next ROPS for money, then we weren't able to put this funding gap, if you will, on that schedule. So the next time that we could do it would be sometime in July, when we'll be coming to you with the next ROPS request. It doesn't get to the Department of Finance for decision till sometime in November or December. Money would come in in January. So this, we're caught between the two request periods when we need to do this project. So the code does recognize this and provides a solution where the cities can loan money to the successor agency to execute enforceable obligations. We would put any loaned money on the next ROPS and ask for it through our next distribution. We have reached out to our legislators to ask for their support, should you want to go forward with this. And we will continue to do that so that we have conduit with the Department of Finance. I should say, we reached out to the staff at the Department of Finance. We said, this is what we're planning to do. Do you see any issues with it? And the response back was, no, that's what this section was there for. This is how we ask you to do it, actually make it a loan with a document, record it, get it, spend it, and then reimburse it. So we have, we have a little bit more comfort, but it's still a discretion of another agency not associated with the city. So again, to solve this, we came up with several alternatives for your consideration. The bridge loan of $750,000, and I guess I didn't say that was the funding gap that we found between what's been approved and what we're expecting on the most recent ROPS, and what we costed the project out, was $750,000. This alternative allows the project to move forward with minimal interruption. But the advance of the city funds, there is some risk with that because we have to go to a state agency and ask. Again, we feel comfortable, and I won't, I'm going to speak for legal, I was going to say I won't speak for legal, but I am. They've looked at the law and believe that the provision is accurate, and we're using it appropriately. As I said, we'll reach out to our legislators. And in talking with the department staff, we feel comfortable that this is, this is a good alternative. We did look at some other things. We could postpone till next summer. That would give us a chance to confirm the funding. But as I said earlier, if we're closed, if the Alex is closed for three consecutive summers, they're not sure that they can recover that business. A third approach would be to phase it. Use, do Phase 1 with the funding that we have, and then come back after ROPS 5 and do Phase 2. This would allow us, again, to secure funding before we made a commitment to spend. However, it would leave the theater with less improvements than it has at a time when they've committed to people on reopening of more. We also are not sure that the funding deferral would be enough to cover the shortfall. We could cancel the expansion project, in which case the monies that we were setting aside for this would get distributed to the taxing entities, including the city of Glendale. But any cost that we have sunk would be lost. The theater would continue to operate as it has, but I think they would tell you that it would just be a matter of time before the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts, as it exists today, could no longer be viable in the marketplace. Our recommendation is alternative 1, to make that loan. I will say that in our budget, that makes up the $750,000 shortfall, there is almost $900,000 in contingency. We put a very conservative 20% contingency because it is a historic building, and we want to make sure that we have enough funding once we get into the project. But there is, there is that amount. As we should note, once we get the bids, we'll know more, could be less. If it is more, we would be looking at more than $750,000. But we feel comfortable with the number that we've got because we have plans that are just freshly done, and we've costed those out. With that completes my presentation. I know there are members of Glendale Arts here, if you have any questions, and staff from many different departments to answer any of your questions.
Questions or comments?
Question. So the city will loan it to the successor agency. The successor agency will use it for the Alex to bridge the gap. Will that be a secured, I mean, will we have any security interest on that money?
You know, I
Like a lien or a?
I suppose we could structure it so that we do and see if that gets Department of Finance approval. I don't have a better answer.
Does that, does that work? I mean, is that?
Something we can definitely consider, if that's a concern of the city.
It's the worst-case scenario. Let's say someone comes in and DOF says, no, you've got to sell the building, but we say, wait a minute, we've put all this money into it. The new owner at least should pay us back at that point. I'd feel a little more secure in that, in that regard.
Yes. If that's the concern of the city council, we will look at inserting a security interest within that loan.
And I know that you've told us that that's, there is a very high chance that this obligation would be recognized in ROPS 5 due to the fact that the money is actually going to be conveyed, and the project's going to be underway, and it'll be hopefully completed by the time ROPS 5 applications are out. So when I think about this, that is a critical factor in my mind. And I am not familiar with the success rate of the ROPS, recognition of the ROPS. I'm basing it, I will be basing my decision on your representation to me that there is a high probability that that will be recognized, and we would be repaid that money back to the city and the general fund or wherever, whichever particular fund we take it from.
We feel that the law is very clear. The Department of Finance has looked at this project several times and has said, yes, we approve it as an enforceable obligation. You are correct. In every statement, they say, we get the right to look at this every six months. But we believe that this is an appropriate use and would move forward based on the representations we got from the Department of Finance.
With moral, ethical, reasonable actors, that would be the representation.
Will the contract have clause in it, I think, remembering right, liquidated damages? If they don't finish in the timeframe, they said there would be a penalty on them, in other words, giving them incentive to finish?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and successor agency, this contract will have two phases to it. The more critical phase is Phase 1, and at the end of the four-month period, they'll have some hefty liquidated damages, I think around $13,000, $14,000 a day.
If they don't perform, so they have the incentive.
Correct.
No incentive's finishing early, but incentive's to finish on time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I share some of Mr. Najarian's concerns. However, I think this is the best option, move forward, and hopefully we're going to bring it in under budget, and the state won't pull out the rug from under us. I do think financially, we're in much better shape, the state is, in much better shape. So I think we'll, I think we'll be able to pull this off.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, the Alex is our icon. It's the one thing that Glendale is known for visually than anything else in town. And if we don't do everything in our power to make sure we keep it and upgrade it for better functioning, because I know I had a lot of conversations when Mary McComb was here, what we needed to do to increase the use of the theater. Be nice 365 days a year, except you have loading in, loading outs that take up time, effort. But we have to do everything, and it's a risk and a reward kind of a thing. And this is one time I think we have to take the risk and end up seeing what the state does to us of anything. So it's the right thing to do.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll move 3A, C, and E for the successor agency.
Second.
Roll call.
Board members Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Move 3B and D for the council.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian, Najarian.
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, we received, noted, and filed the quarterly report that was provided to us when we moved A. There was no presentation made on it. We received it.
Okay, next.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
For the council.
For council.
For second.
To adjourn for the successor agency.
We are adjourned, council and successor agency.
It's closed.
Here is closed session.